All right, we're ready. Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on January the 12th, 2021, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners' courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the invocation of pledge allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag and all ethos. Father, I want to thank you that for your love and your mercy, I want to thank you, Father, that we live in a country that we still have freedoms that our forefathers fought and died for. Father, I want to pray that you'll be with our first responders and be with those folks that had had this COVID and their families and bring them back to health. I pray, Father, that you'll be with us as long as we make decisions for the county. I ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and
Second item on the agenda calls for citizens' input and dark concerns. Hearing done, we would go to number three, presentation and discussion, pretrial diversion and preemptment plea programs by Jarvis Parson, District Attorney.
Thank y'all for having me. Let me get set up real quick. One of the things, it just says Commissioners' Court update. While they're getting that ready, I wanted to do something a little bit different and just update the Commissioners' Court on you invested in our office about a year and a half ago. Yeah, I think it was just, it was October 2019. You gave us the funding for a third intake attorney, and that funding was for a specific purpose, one of which was to see if we could try to find a way to dispose of some more cases and institute a pretrial diversion program and find one that would be suitable, that would be consistent with still achieving justice and at the same time giving people a second chance. And so that was kind of the parameters of what we did. And so we got a person, a full-time person, in October of 2019, and just wanted to let you know where we are from, going from here. So that was the goal. That's where it started, trying to find ways to dispose of cases before indictment and try to find ways to not use the criminal justice system as only a tool for retribution, but also see if we could use it as a tool for rehabilitation. The, what we decided on was a two-pronged attack to this, to this problem. The first was, we decided to look at a first offender drug program, which is individuals who have never come into contact with the criminal justice system, and they had a low level drug offense that is a felony, so it comes under our jurisdiction, but would be a person that we, when we looked at them and we looked at all the facts, would be a maximum level candidate for rehabilitation. And so we started that program in October of 2019 and continued that program even through the pandemic because we were still working through the pandemic. And so what we found, hold on one second. There we go. It's on. And I think I've blacked the screen out just for a second. There we go. All right. We found is that we admitted 123 defendants into the program, okay? And so that program is consistent. They have to sign a, they have to admit their guilt and then go over to the probation department. They pay probation fees because they're essentially supervised. But the benefit is if they do not test positive, if they complete all their requirements of probation, their case is then dismissed. So essentially, they go on probation without going on probation and to see if that can maybe maximize the rehabilitative effect. We've had 50 people successfully complete. The, the program is for 12 months so far. 12 people have been unsuccessfully discharged and either pled guilty, pled guilty pre-indictment, and we'll talk about that in a second. And then four people were unsuccessful and indicted out of that program. The rest of those individuals are still in the program and doing well in the program. So what does that turn out to be? Looks like, there we go. It's a 75.75% success rate as of right now, which I think is very good because what it does is that these people are not in jail right now, costing the county money that way. And the other important thing I thought was really good is that none of those defendants, because we have tracked those defendants, none of those defendants have reoffended, which also means that we're making very good decisions as to who is good for the pretrial diversion program, and, and they're getting the message and going back in and it's basically strating up and flying right, which I think is very, very good for the program. But we didn't stop there. It's like I said, we had a two-pronged attack to try to, try to deal with these cases. So our pre-indictment pleas were cases that are not eligible under the pre-indict, under the diversion criteria, so they had a prior criminal history, but their cases were still lower, a lower enough level till we thought that we could do some sort of rehabilitation, move those cases quickly, and they never go and sit on the court's docket for six or eight or months or a year. So this does not include the diversion candidates, the numbers that I'm about to give you. We've had 155 defendants have been disposed of so far, and not just 155 defendants, but that means there's 316 cases have been disposed of, not going through the court system. Essentially, the only time they're on the court's docket is when the case is set for a plea, so it's literally on there for a day and then it's gone. So it just adds to our dispositions.
So does this, excuse me, does this mean 155 would have more than one case?
Yes, some of them would have one case, some of them would have more than one case. But all, the total of 316 cases have been disposed of in this program through pre-indictment pleas. So our intake, intake attorney has been working hard. He also does other intake and also helps with grand jury, but this is his primary job here and just want to show you that they're making a difference. And not just to give you this flat number, I wanted to give you some context to those numbers, just a little bit. We have a ton of drug cases in our, in our, in our county. So in terms of the number of defendants diverted, it's about 262 defendants total that have been diverted, either through pre-indictment pleas or through pretrial diversion. To give you a little bit of, of what are we dealing with there, that is 55% of the sum number of defendants with drug cases who had their cases resolved in 2019. So this one position is resolving over half of our cases that are languishing in the, in the courts before they get, before they get disposed of. So they're on the courts for one, two, three years. We're doing that stuff early and not burning the court's docket. And if we went back further to 2018, it would establish 65% of the sum number of defendants with drug cases in those courts. Now, what we're not talking about are drug delivery cases. We're not talking about drug dealers in those numbers. What we're talking about are drug users, the people who are addicts, so we're getting them the actual help that they need and they're not reoffending, which I think is a good thing for everybody. Yes, ma'am?
Of course. Does this mean that we're getting them into drug treatment programs also?
They are.
Would that be included in this program?
They are, they are on substance abuse conditions through the county, so essentially they go on probation. So they are being supervised by probation officers at Brazos County. They're paying their fees to Brazos County, they're getting drug tested through Brazos County, and they're not reoffending.
But no formal drug treatment?
I think if they, if they're recommended for drug treatment, they go through, I think, a certain, a class when they go to Brazos County, but these individuals are low-level drug offenders, and we have a ton of these cases in our county.
Sure.
So these aren't people with severe addictions, where you see a whole host of cases. The drug treatment cases are ones where we would probably put them on deferred and then send them to either Safe P, ISP's, drug treatments like La Hacienda, places like that. These individuals are many times the young offenders, which create, which are a huge batch of docket, college kids, and not just college kids, because I really do believe that we focus many times on the college kid, but kids who may be in the workforce, who that felony conviction means more to them in terms of not being able to get a job and not being able to gain full employment than it does to somebody who may be able to get a job after they get a four-year degree. And so we're trying to be mindful of both of those individuals. So all in all, I think it's been a success. I just wanted to update y'all on kind of where we're going and what we're doing, how we're continuing to make the case that we can do both. We can both deal with individuals who do violent crimes, but also deal with individuals in a rehabilitative way who need our help. And so if you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer.
Jarvis, besides this, in your estimation, and by the way, thank you for the report. It's very interesting, and it appears that we're making some impact. But how does this affect your backlog? You know, we hear about the large backlog. Have you noticed or is there any effect?
Yes, and so I can tell you, so obviously during the pandemic, things slowed down because we weren't having court and things like that. And so what I did was just in case, I pulled some numbers from the Office of Court Administration. So from January 2013, when I took over, to December 31st, 2020, our performance measures indicate that we have a clearance rate of 118%. So that's long-term. That is our range, this is how we deal with that. To give you just a little bit of a context, during that time, there are eight counties who have a higher disposition rate than us out of 254, which puts us in the top 96.5%. None of those counties are bigger than us. In fact, the highest county, the highest populated county that is disposing of more cases than we are at a faster rate is 13,000 people. So that lets you know kind of what we are doing in the district courts here in Brazos County. Now, in, during the pandemic, March 1st to December 31st of 2020, because those are the numbers that we have, our numbers dropped a little bit to 114%. So just a 4% drop during that time. So we're still being able to move cases. We're doing Zoom dockets right now. So we have, it has, we have been able to keep up and not have a huge drop-off during the pandemic like some other counties because we are still moving those cases through the system.
So let me ask, these numbers that you're talking about, this pre-adjudication?
Yes, yes.
Those wouldn't be included in the OCA numbers as far as your 118? In other words, my question is if these were added in there, that 118 might be?
It would be, some of those are, so the pre-indictment pleas technically go on the court's docket, but just for a day to plead. The diversion cases are not on the docket.
Okay.
So they're essentially cases that are being moved through and being disposed of that you don't even see in those numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you have any other questions, please give me a call. I'm over at the building, over at the courthouse, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jarvis. You've had some good ideas, and I think you've been successful in trying to move cases along. So thank you. Number four, we'll move on to consider and take action on Agenda Files 4 through 24. Number four is proclamation 21-002, recognizing Walter Herbert Richards' 101st birthday.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we have somebody here to, to receive this proclamation. I don't know that anybody's here today to receive it. It's pretty significant when you reach that century mark.
Yes, indeed.
I got a call from the family and asked if we could do something. I said, you know, sure, we, we need to do that.
Yes.
If there's not anybody here to receive it, I won't read it, but it's a, it's a good proclamation, a good, good thing.
Thank you.
So number five is acceptance assurance office for $50 cash donation from Brazos County citizen for certain insurance office crime fund.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval grant application for Second Amendment to Grant Agreement between Texas Council of Family Violence and the Brazos County District Attorney's Office.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is request authorization to apply for a U.S. Department of Treasury for Emergency Rental Assistance Program Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021, made available through the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act of 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
I understand that this makes Brazos County eligible to receive 23.7, be with the, no?
No.
No?
We're gonna, we're gonna have some discussion.
23.7 billion?
No, that's, I think, probably for the whole nation.
Right. It makes us eligible.
Makes us.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, it makes us eligible for a portion of that amount, and we just learned this morning that the state of Texas has been allocated almost $2 billion, but Brazos County's allocation has not been printed out yet.
Awesome. Thank you.
And so I think, I mean, of course, it's the two cities, I think for the two cities and the county to be able to qualify, they had to come through the county, is my understanding with this, this particular grant.
Uh huh.
It needed the county to step up and, and receive, I mean, we typically don't do these kinds of things. We don't have enough staff, and so I know y'all reached out to, to us and asked about it, and I'm certainly happy if we can make some of this happen.
Sure.
And I think y'all have, you and College Station have both are willing to take on the workload. I know our, our auditor's office would typically be doing grants. They are neck-deep in, in financial software, trying to get through that, and so I really didn't want to add any more burden to them, and I know it will add something. I mean, I know that there's probably something that we'll have to do, but my hope would be that the cities would be able to handle it since that's, y'all do this kind of stuff.
Judge, we do have a short presentation.
Okay.
From Bryan and College Station. If whoever.
And while you're getting that together, Judge, I'd like to say that it is collaboration such as this that really benefits our county. This grant is based on having a population of over 200,000, I read. So when we work together, it's good for the whole county, not one entity, but the whole county benefits from this. So I want to thank you for finding this grant and working together with the other entities to make this happen for Brazos County. We truly need all the help we can get out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And just to start, my name is Alcee Vaughn, and I'm with the City of Bryan, Community And we promise we'll be brief. It sounds like most of you have reviewed what we sent over. So just to give you a really short summary of this, both cities have been recipients of the CARES funding through CDBG, but this round of funding is coming through the Treasury Department of the United States. It is an emergency rent program, and as the judge explained, neither city was eligible on their own, but together, because we are a county of over 200,000, we can partner with you all if you decide that you want to move forward with this and submit the, the certification no later than, it's today as, as far as the certification. So the funds are for rent, rent arrears, utilities, utility arrears, and other housing expenses, which were stated as related to COVID, but not specific to a certain, so I think they left that vague on purpose. All the funds must be obligated by September 30th, 2021, at least 65% is what I read when I was reading over, but the funds only go through December of 2021, so it will have to be a pretty fast turnaround on our part. There is a statement, and I'm sure you are all familiar with this, no duplication of benefits that applies to any type of federal funding, so both of the cities and any other entity that receives federal funding has to keep it straight on, you know, where the funds are coming for and, you know, where they're going, and we have to make sure that whoever is a beneficiary of this program or any other program that we deliver through federal funds, that there's no double-dipping, basically is what, what it means. Households are certified, recertified every three months if there's a continued need for their rent being paid in utilities, and that is at 80% or below the median income, which is our federal guidelines. There is a priority for those households that are at, you know, the very, the very lower income, 50% and below, or one or more households that have been unemployed and also potentially going to be homeless. So there has to be an established priority for running the program, but we can go up to 80%, and then there's quarterly reporting, of which we don't know what that looks like right now. We have, just to let y'all know, we have several other sources of funding. We wanted to kind of let you all know what the City of Bryan's been doing. We, we are funding three public service agencies for rent, mortgage, utilities, and anything related to COVID for our financial crisis currently right now. That's Project Unity, Catholic Charities, and Family Promise. We, we've identified these agencies of those agencies that are potentially, could be a sub-recipient of this grant if we move forward with it. We contacted all of them. There is, they're saying there's an increased need. We thought maybe it would go down, but no, that doesn't seem to be the issue there. So we also, just to let you know, I'm, this is just for y'all's knowledge, the City of Bryan is, also has a emergency working capital grant for businesses that are located in Bryan. It's very important to us to really attack the issues locally in the ways that we can, and that's through assistance with rent utilities and also working with our small businesses. We also have an internal program funded by our home grant, and we're out of that money ourselves. And then the city also participated in some state CARES funding and also worked with United Way, for small businesses and public service agencies. So I know you all have been very busy, as everybody has been, trying to get whatever money we have out into the community. This just gives you an overview with the City of Bryan of what we've been doing. On the small business side, we've actually funded 16 businesses with 43 pending applications for economic assistance, and that means they could get up to $30,000, depending on how many employees that they have. And basically, that's for job creation and retention, but also to help the business. And job creation and retention is related to their low and moderate income employees. All of our funds in 19 have been expended. We're on the 2020 funds right now. We have an additional round of CARES funding coming up. On the public service agency, there, it's all obligated and almost all spent. So you can see that we continue to have a priority need here with our businesses, as well as what we have on the agenda today, which is the rent assistance.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Will you need to hire personnel to monitor this, or do you have the staff to add this burden to their already over tax?
We have the staff to, to monitor. What we, we plan on doing is subbing it out to one of the public service agencies. They're already set up. They know what to do. They know how to collect the data.
Okay.
They know how to document, so we're going to move forward in that direction.
Great.
We also are going to be recipients of another set of money. The City of Bryan will be getting 167,963 pending council approval, and that's also for rent, slightly different program in the terms of the program, but basically for the same thing. We're on city council today. I mentioned that we have additional COVID money also coming in, and that was 603,000. Again, we have had very close contact with all of our public service agencies that are serving our low and moderate income clients, and they continue to assure us if we get the money, we can spend it. So particularly with this grant, from what we can see by reading, you have to submit the certification today if for any reason, when we learn what money there is, I think that we could partner with you all, determine with College Station, you know, who we're going to serve and what we're going to serve and how we're going to do that. I don't think there'll be any issue with that. Today's certification is not a commitment. It is an interest on your part to make sure that the funds that are allocated for the county come to the county. So Debbie Eller also will make her presentation. I wanted to make sure that you all don't have any questions of me.
Thank you. Thank you.
I did a couple, just one question. If you'll back up to, I think it was two slides ago, about the eviction diversion?
Right there.
Right. Yeah. Now, I know, I don't see any of them here, but I know that our justices, the P's, are working on a pilot program with that. Y'all are all interfaced with them, and that's what this is referring to?
Yes, sir.
Super. Thank you.
I think she'll.
Just one second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alcee.
While she's bringing that up, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to collaborate with y'all. That's what it takes to make our community strong, and we look forward to working on this. Alcee, thank you for covering all of the details of the grant. I just wanted to make you aware of what College Station has done so far. We know that small businesses are the backbone of our community, so we've worked to have an economic assistance grant program. We've awarded almost $800,000 to 46 small businesses. We also worked to provide a little over $1.6 million to public health reimbursements to small businesses for all of the things that they've had to do in order to be open and safe. And then we have allocated an additional $411,000 from the CARES Act funding to small businesses. We currently have 47 applications that we're reviewing. And round two is open. Yes, ma'am?
I believe, I didn't hear your introduction of yourself, but you, you represent, okay.
I'm Debbie Eller, yes, ma'am. I'm Debbie Eller.
I recognize you under the mask, Debbie.
I'm Debbie.
You represent College Station.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for that.
So are you reporting what's happening in College Station, or would small businesses in Bryan be able to access these fundings?
As these are federal funds through the Housing and Urban Development.
Yes.
It's within our city limits, so these college, these.
So College Station is represented by your numbers.
Correct.
All right.
And they have to be located within the city limits.
Of College Station.
That does restrict some of what we can do.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, ma'am. We also had a home-funded rent assistance program. We assisted 90 households with up to three months of rent, and $207,000 was paid out to 60 different landlords. So that, we did reach out to those landlords, and they confirmed that the need is still there and growing.
Oh, yes.
And then we are also working with local service agencies. We have funded a lot of the same partners that Alcee mentioned. In addition, College Station ISD has implemented a family empowerment program, and it has been very successful. We actually go to council this week to award another $250,000 to them to assist the families with children in College Station ISD. And then we, Alcee mentioned the T-RAP program, so we are working towards receiving those funds as well. This will be additional rent assistance. You know, any amount of funding that we can bring in our community can be used right now, as Alcee indicated. So I'm available for questions if you have any, but thank you again for this opportunity.
Could you put the last slide up? The one, the next one. Got it. Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, ma'am.
So let me, let me ask, if it's, if it is a rent reimbursement, does it go to the renter, or does it go to, I mean, I heard, I think I renter or does it go to, I mean, I heard, I think I heard you say in this, the program y'all have been doing that you actually pay some of the, the property owners, which is, I mean, we certainly don't want the, the renter being kicked out, but the property owner, if he doesn't get paid somewhere along the line there, I mean, they've got electricity and property taxes and all, so is that, is that how the money gets spent, is toward, for the rent, actually? Is that?
Yes.
Going to the landlord.
What we do is, it, the tenants have to qualify and then the landlords have to agree to participate.
Right.
So that we do pay the landlord directly.
Okay, okay, that's good.
And, and how does that work through the JP program? On, on your previous slide, it said it's through the JP program.
We hope to create a referral program so then when an eviction petition is filed in their court, they can refer that landlord and tenant to our programs so that they can avoid eviction proceedings.
So, it's, it's important that those evictions be filed but not enforced, is what you're telling me?
And Commissioner, we have some JPs that will not accept filing. So, there is a bottleneck. The landlord is paid, but then I understand that some landlords are saying that they're owed six thousand, you know, large numbers that really don't stand up. So, it's, we need to monitor the program. It's a great program, but there are abusers too.
That is correct.
So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Happy to be here, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Linda. I mean, Debbie, I'm sorry. Okay, thank y'all both for coming in and explaining to us.
Both cities do a great job on this and our thanks to Alcee and Debbie for the work they do.
Okay, well, let's see, we, we passed that, didn't we? Did we vote on it?
No, we have not voted on it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is request authorization to apply for U.S. Department of Treasury for, did, that's, that's what we just.
Okay, number eight.
Yeah, we're at eight. Request from Sheriff's Office for the following personnel changes with effective date of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. This change will decrease the Sheriff's Office FY twenty-one budget to an estimated amount of a thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. A is decrease tro, sorry.
Move approval, A and B?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is request from Facility Services for payment authorization to, for Bosch Onsite Septic Design, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for site evaluation for design of Facility Service Building Forty-eight oh one, Highway twenty-one West. Purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number ten is request from Facility Services for payment authorization to Cone, Inc. in the amount of sixty-nine dollars seventy-nine cents for the elevator at the Expo Complex North Arena. Charges billed or outside the scope of the service maintenance contract, a blanket purchase order for this type of billable service was not in place.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eleven is payment authorization to Cone, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and eleven dollars and one cent for the repair of an elevator call button on the fourth floor of the courthouse. Scope of work was not covered in the service, uh, maintenance agreement. Billable service purchaser was not obtained in advance.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twelve is approval, approval order to refuse to contract with a person indebted to the county under Local Government Code Section two sixty-two point zero two seven six.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number thirteen is approval of clinical affiliation agreement between Texas Women's University and Brazos County.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number fourteen is approval of amendment number one, contract seventeen dash two forty-eight ATM machines for Brazos County with Quick Draw ATM services for one additional machine.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number fifteen is approval of contract renewal, twenty-one dash one hundred and fifteen R. Transportation and cremation services of deceased with hill year funeral home.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number sixteen is approval of contract renewal, twenty-one dash one sixteen R. Termite Control Service with Boonville Heritage Park with All-Star Pest Control.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seventeen is approval of contract renewal, twenty-one dash one seventeen R. Motor Graded Blades with Valk Manufacturing.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eighteen is approval of award number, of award bid, twenty-one dash zero eight two for Seal Code recommended award is FN Pluck Construction.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nineteen is approval of expenditure to journal entries for Brazos County's FY two thousand and twenty-one second quarter cash contribution to the Brazos County Health District.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A and B?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve A and B, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-one is Commissioners Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move approval, A through F?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve A through F, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-two is budget amendments, budget amendment FY twenty slash twenty-one fifteen point one.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-three is personnel change status.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-four is payment of claims. Claims be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight one zero five zero eight seven through claim number eight one zero five two three five and claims number nine zero zero one one four five through claim number nine zero zero one one seven one.
Move approval, second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty-five, juvenile directors report on detention population. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We presently have sixteen juveniles in detention, nine males and seven females. We have seven juveniles in isolation, that's just protocol, and twenty-six on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda?
Linda?
You said you had fifteen?
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, okay.
Nine males and seven females.
Question?
Yes, male.
Do you have any staff affected by COVID?
At the present.
At this time?
At the present time, I'm trying to think. I don't, we don't have anyone in detention at all.
Okay.
And no children.
Oh, but staff, do we have any staff reporting?
I, not, we, I think we might have one, but that's it, that's all we have. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number twenty-six, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Kevin.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our high population for the last twenty-four hours was five oh eight. That's four hundred fifty-six males, fifty-two females. We have fifteen currently on electronic monitor with nine pending. And we have zero positive inmates.
Great.
And one that's in quarantine and that person's actually been tested and is negative. We just have multiple layers of protections. So, just, we're extremely proud of our staff and the job that they're doing, keeping that out. But now, as far as our staff, agency total, we have twenty employees who are out either positive or quarantined and about thirteen of those are in the jail. So, we're feeling the effects of the, the holidays, but we're making it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number twenty-seven is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Good morning, Mr. Gray. And welcome.
Looking forward to it.
Welcome. Mr. Gray, you don't need a special invitation to come, you're welcome anytime.
I'll do my very best to make you happy.
Thank you. We won't hold you to that, but we appreciate the effort.
And, and we won't waste much of your time over here, we try to work through them. Okay, any, any other announcement of interest items or possible future agenda topics? Hearing none, call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll adjourn.
Are we taking pictures tonight?
Yes, we are, we're supposed to.